Okay, I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Planning Commission for City of San Clemente May 23rd, meeting to order. Pledge of Allegiance. We're gonna have Jim Ruland.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jim. Can we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Kaczynski? Absent. Commissioner Tally?
Here.
Commissioner Wu?
Here.
Chair Pro-Tan Blackwell?
Here.
Vice Chair Ruland?
Here.
Chair Crandall?
Here. The next item is approval of minutes. We have a couple in front of us, actually special orders of business, which we have none, and then we have some minutes to approve. We have the May 8th minutes of the Planning Commission, and it appears we have a quorum, so do we have any corrections or a motion? I have a list provided by staff that five items that will be corrected.
I have some changes.
Okay. We will go to those, so we, just so it's on the record, we have Page 1, roll call, remove David Carrillo, Assistant Planner. He was not present at roll call. Page 2, roll call, Steve Schwartz was misspelled, revise Schwartz to Schwartz. Page 3, public hearing item 8A, remove David Carrillo, Assistant Planner, recommended the Planning Commission continue this item to the 23rd, 2019 adjourned regular meeting. Page 6, third paragraph modified, he offered to replace the door with a Dutch door to the door that currently exists is a Dutch door. Item 5, Page 6, a motion corrected Resolution Number PC 1901-2 to Resolution Number PC 1901-1. There's also a change to Page 9 that, Eileen, do you have the verbiage on that one item?
Yes, on Page 9, the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, paragraph down under number 11, the first large paragraph, the third sentence, instead of "he questioned why City Council" was presented with, it's gonna be "he questioned why City Council's staff report has an alternative recommendation."
Thank you, and Commissioner Tally, you had a change?
Yes.
Take hold of this little...
Yes, I have several changes. First of all, that paragraph that you referenced, that entire section, I brought up under old business, not under commission reports, reports of commissioners or staff.
You're right, but Attorney Robertson said that you can say anything you want during your comment portion, so I took it as a comment.
Okay.
Because under old business, that would've been something scheduled in there.
Well, actually, old business would've been any business that the Planning Commission had dealt with prior to that pursuant to advice we received from City Attorney at the meeting.
It can go under 10 or 11.
10 or 11, okay, sure.
I specifically addressed it under old business, so I'd prefer for it to be under old business and not reports of commissioners or staff. I have a couple of additions. The ordinance was presented to the Planin-- the second sentence, the ordinance was presented to the Planning Commission for consideration, revised, and forwarded to City Council. It was, the ordinance was presented to the Planning Commission for consideration, and a public hearing was conducted, revised, and forwarded to City Council.
Okay, so what now, what are you trying to add?
There was a public, it was that there was a public hearing held. It was presented to...
The old business was...
The old business was, the ordinance was presented to the Planning Commission for consideration, a public hearing was conducted, revised, and forwarded to City Council.
Do you wanna say...
There was a public hearing held, is what I was, there is no mention of the public hearing.
I'm just saying that the ordinance, would you rather say after that, the ordinance was revised, instead of just saying...
Yeah, that's fine.
And then, to just clarify.
That's fine.
Okay.
On the last sentence of that first paragraph, additionally, he questioned why the commission has not been notified in advance and then, or subsequent to, the alternatives and the revised recommendations, because I was concerned about that we weren't given a heads-up and that we also weren't told after it was done.
Or we could just say it had not been notified.
I was concerned that we weren't notified in advance or even afterwards, very specifically.
Okay, so the meeting did not occur, so when you say, or afterwards, I was thinking you said that in advance of the meeting, of the City Council meeting.
It was in advance of the agenda report, really, where the staff report was, or even subsequent to the agenda report.
Of the agenda report, or subsequent to?
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
And then, the next paragraph, I, after the City Planner Perez explained, an additional sentence would've been that Mr. Tally stated that the appropriate course of action was for this item to return to Planning Commission.
Well put.
The course, the appropriate course of action would have been for the item to be returned for Planning Commission.
Planning Commission.
Should have been, or...
I said, Mr. Tally stated that the appropriate course of action was for, or yes, should have been for this item to return to the Planning Commission.
Should have been, okay.
Do we have any other comments?
This is on Page 4, the second bullet point listed. My recol-- it says that the concern was with existing high-traffic levels. My recollection is, is actually the concern was that it was the intersection of two scenic corridors, so I'd like to rephrase that bullet point to read, express concern with installing a new monument sign at the intersection of Avenida La Pata and Avenida Vista Hermosa as it is an intersection of two scenic corridors.
Do we have a motion?
And with those changes, I move that we accept the minutes of the May 8th Planning Commission.
Motion by Commissioner Ruland.
Second by Blackwell. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 0, 1.
Aye, abstained.
And, excuse me, 5, 0, 1, and Don Brown abstains, and we have one absent, Kaczynski. The next set of minutes is the March 6th, 2019, regular meeting, oh, study session. We have, Don Brown, we have a quorum to approve these minutes. Do we have any corrections or comments or a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Commissioner Tally?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the study session of the City of San Clemente, March 6th, 2019.
Motion by Tally, second by Brown, all in favor? Aye. Opposed?
We have one abstention, so it's...
Two.
Two. Commissioner Wu and Blackwell abstain, so that's 4, 0, 2...
No, 4, 0, 3.
4, 0, 3, with Kaczynski being absent.
You know, I don't know if you noticed on the minutes, but I did start to do them a little bit different because of, because of the way that you were announcing them, that people that weren't there, were absent, were abstaining, so they were abstaining as well. So I have been doing the minutes a little bit differently, just to reflect that. I, you know, I have not discussed it yet.
Which is the clearest way for you, and I'm happy to do it.
See, I've been doing it like this, where even if they're not there, it's, it's noted like that.
They're not here.
They're not here.
Just be forward. They're not here, abstaining, there's not here.
Okay.
Yeah, just be forward.
Okay, 'cause I do it differently for other, okay, all right.
Correct things when I ever stumble, no problem.
No, you, it's not you, it's, it's a different way that I do it for other cities, where I have them if they're absent, abstaining.
Other cities.
Sorry.
Okay, we have another set of minutes for the regular Planning Commission meeting of March 6th. We have a quorum. Do we have any corrections or a motion?
I move to approve the minutes of the March 6th Planning Commission meeting.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Ruland, a second by Commissioner Tally, all in favor?
Aye.
Absent.
We have one abstention. So that's 4...
0, 1.
Thank you. 0, 1. That takes care of all the minutes.
1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, there's another abstain.
Is there another one back there?
Commissioner Blackwell abstain.
Blackwell abstain.
Yes.
Thank you. Got it, thank you.
The next item is oral and written communications. Do we have any cards?
No, sir.
Is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak to something that is not on the agenda this evening? I see none, so we will move to the consent calendar. Capital Improvement Program Annual Update. Do we have any corrections, changes, questions that we need to pull that up and discuss?
I have none.
I would like to pull it, please.
Okay.
Very good. Commissioner Ruland?
Thank you. Looking at Items 9 and 17, and those have to do with lighting changes, and the thing is, I didn't see anything in the items themselves, or in the reference general plan policies regarding our dark skies policies in the general plan, specifically NR 701 and NR 702. I am just a little hesitant about those two, because I, because their change-outs, even like-for-likes, could at this point not conform to our general plan policies, so maybe just, I'm not quite sure how to address it, but maybe just a statement on each of those, indicating that they will be done in a way that conforms with our dark skies policies, something of that nature would probably be sufficient, I would imagine.
Okay. That's 9 and whatever.
Number 9, that basketball and tennis court lighting, and number 17, which is Rancho San Clemente park light poles and fixtures replacements.
Chris, do you have any comments on that?
Here's the mic for the podium. Sure. Let me start by saying that the Planning Commission's comments will be forwarded on to the City Council when they adopt the annual update of the capital improvement program as part of the budget process, so the comments that the commission makes will be included in the record, and following the budget process, following the budget process, the Public Works Department goes through a separate approval process where they look at the scoping and get into more of the details. For the purpose of this item, we actually had cited the policy that you're questioning regarding dark skies on those project sheets, to make it clear that the intent is that they, the projects be consistent with the dark sky policy, so if you look at Page 22 of your packet, the policy is on there.
7A 22?
Yeah, I can show you here.
I see the BPR policies, I don't see the NR policies.
Which policy is it? Commissioner Ruland?
The ones I were referring to was NR 701 and NR 702.
If you look at the...
So, so, policy BPR 7 dash, 7 dot 2 is, includes, "We use outdoor light shielding measures to minimize light trespass and glare while enhancing safety and aesthetics," and that's the policy that we've used previously for lighting projects, to make sure that's clear, that lights shall be shielded.
So this is, hmm, was this moved from BPR to, oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah, the, hmm, okay, so there's two places then where we've got the...
There is a specific dark skies policy, but we, we use this one because it's related to beaches, parks, and rec facilities. And we thought it had enough language in there to make it clear the intent is to shield lighting.
Very good. Can you read it to me just once more, please, 'cause I was looking up stuff when you were saying that, so...
It's actually on Page 12 of your packet. I have all the policies there that are referenced in the packet. So on the bottom, right-hand corner of the packet is the page number.
Okay, so that's good, that handles most of my issue, I'll just, then I'll just make as a comment that that is, that's not necessarily, that's an important measure, but not necessarily the only measure for dark skies, there's also the, the, oh, I just blanked on the name, the, the number of Kelvins in the light, what's that, the heat of the light or the coolness of the light, sort of things like that, so those are just things that we want, would wanna consider when you get down to the specifics of these lighting that we, that we need to purchase.
And if the commission would like, we could cite the specific dark skies policy on these project sheets if that's an added level of comfort in making sure that the project's consistent with those policy.
NR 701 is a little more general, 'cause it talks about minimizing light pollution and trespass while enhancing safety and aesthetics, so it specifically indicates light pollution, which could then go into the bandwidth of the lighting, so, as well as things like shielding, stuff like that, so, so if you reference that, I'd be perfectly happy.
So you'd like to add the dark sky policy on the sheets?
Yeah, NR 701, yeah.
NR, what was the policy, NR 701?
NR 701, it's in the natural resources element.
Okay.
So, 'cause NR 702 actually is almost the same as BPR 702.
Okay.
So 701 just, you know, gets the full, the full effect, so...
Okay.
Okay, so I would be happy if we just referenced those, referenced that on those two items.
So you just want the reference, not the text, not the full?
The reference is fine, yeah.
Okay.
And Commissioner Wu?
I have a question on item 31, Del Mar Electrical Services and the Street Tree Rehabilitation Project, number 19807. Last time we reviewed the capital improvement project, there was also an item about street trees on Del Mar. At the time, it was proposed by Public Works to replace all the street trees on Del Mar to, to the Mexican Fern Palm. There was some concern expressed on that item. This year, it's, the trees will stay, and they will be rehabilitated to accommodate electrical services. Would there any change to the tree issue on Del Mar?
Our Public Works Director could comment on that, I don't know.
Okay.
But...
Good evening, Planning Commissioners, Tom Bonniget, Public Works Director. Yes, the project has changed as recently as the budget workshop last night, where Council gave us direction at the long-term financial plan workshop in March to just sort of consider that in depth, to see if there was a way to do the project and not have to replace the trees, and so we've done that, and as I reported last night, the tree part of the project has been omitted. The long story short is, the shelf life of the trees is still maybe 10 years plus. The issue with the trees is that the root systems are fairly compromised, because they're root-bound and really small tree wells, but they're otherwise doing okay. The risk is, they might be more susceptible to perhaps blowing over in a severe windstorm, 'cause they don't have a great root system, but they've performed well, they're actually quite, they've been happier than they have in years with the rains that we've had, and so we can do the electrical services part and not compromise the trees, so Council agreed to just stick with the electrical, and we'll leave the trees alone, and we'll cross that bridge, and we get there, hopefully in a decade or so, about what a replacement would be. So they're gone, is the short story.
Thank you for clarification, I think it's a good change, although the concern expressed in the past Planning Commission meeting, when we reviewed that program, was about the character and urban design of Del Mar Street. So I hope next time, you said when the time is, when the time eventually comes, we're gonna replace a tree, I hope that will be a consideration, because having a current, currently there's a shady tree with a canopy, replacing them with a Mexico Fern Palm, they change the character quite dramatically, and it's gonna affect the character of the street.
Agreed, and in 10 years' time, when that discussion happens, the community might decide that's what they wanna do, and we recognized, even if we were gonna continue down the path of a tree replacement, we'd have to go through a whole process, make actual amendments if it was adopted to various policies and plans that are in place, because there is a pretty limited plant palette right now for the Del Mar. I forgot what master plan it's in, or specific plan, but, but now that really is kind of kicked down the road, and, but that will be a very public process to figure out what to do, if anything, different from the current species.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Commissioner Brown?
To add on to that process, I'm glad you're not putting the palm trees in any in 10 years, 'cause they're high maintenance, and when they get to 80 feet, you're trimming them every year, so I think, you know, another tree selection is more advised, but I'm glad we're going without the trees right now. I'd also like to commend you on the Project 28 and 35, which are alleys and parking lots, and that's, I know you've been putting alleys in the last three SIPs, I don't know when you're gonna do your first one.
Yeah.
Because our alleys look like East Beirut.
Right.
And, and so I'm really heartened by that, particularly now that in this SIP, it's the alley right down where I live, and so I'm actually looking forward to that getting paid, but I know you've got three more in the queue, keep up the good work, so thank you very much.
Right, they're in there for funding, and we're just trying to group them and catch up on some backlog of streets projects.
I noticed your third quarter update there, that a lot of those are languishing because of lack of traffic engineering support and all that.
Right, but we're staffed up again, so now we're catching up.
Okay, you got a traffic engineer and a...
And a streets engineer is what I needed for those projects.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, Tom. Commissioner Blackwell? Thank you. So this last year, we talked about the speed cushion program, we were gonna give it a try, one was done up in Telaga, and another one, I think Valencia?
Not yet.
We did one in Forster Ranch.
Forster Ranch.
Valencia's coming in September.
September, okay.
With the street project.
Okay, is that, that wasn't included in this program, correct?
It's not in this proposed program, that is, in the past, or, speed cushions, since it's part of traffic calming, we have a placeholder traffic calming, and then those projects, when they're approved by Council, they come in off-cycle, so to speak, so they may not end up as a project sheet, and then we attach them to the next available street construction project, and that's what's happening with Valencia.
Okay. Christopher Bowles.
I just like, I had some of the gentlemen from Public Works that had to do some work on the water line, great guys.
Okay, great, thank you, I'll pass that on.
Do we have any other comments on this? Do we have a motion to determine the projects categorically exempt and to adopt the Resolution 1901-5 and move it on to City Council with the changes requested by Commissioner Ruland to add NR 701 to item 9?
9 and 17.
9 and 17.
So moved?
We need a motion for some of...
I'll make a motion to adopt a Resolution PC 19-015, Resolution Planning Commission from City of San Clemente, California, finding the fiscal year 2020 capital improvement program is consistent with the San Clemente general plan with changes as noted.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by Brown, second by Tally, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes, passes 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 0. Okay. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 0. The next item is public hearing. We have one item, amendment to conditional use permit 17036, AM CUP 180607, minor architectural permits 19109, 940 Kaia Amanser K and L, Drift Distillery Expansion, David Carrillo's our planner, and...
Mr. Chairman?
We have some clarifications by Commissioner Tally that he wanted to make prior to the presentation.
Yes, in reviewing this, this item, I noticed that Exhibit, or Attachment 2 is the staff report from the San Clemente Planning Commission dated April 5th, 2017, and there was the Resolution PC 17009, which was attached, which I believe was the original permit for the draft distillery, and in there, it noted that myself and Commissioner Blackwell had voted no. Both of us were absent from the meeting, and just for a point of clarification, if I'd been there, I would've voted yes, but I'd like the record to at least reflect that.
Eileen, do you have that information?
Is it the resolution itself, or is it the minutes?
No, no, it was the Resolution PC 17009.
Okay, I'll work with staff for that.
Okay.
Because that's generated by staff.
Thank you.
Got it, thank you.
And I just have one comment before David starts, is, after reviewing all this, I was surprised that it didn't say that the work has already been done and is currently in place on this project, and that wasn't stated in the staff report, and I think it probably should be. So when people go back, they'll realize this is coming back to permit something that was installed previously.
There is a section in the report that says the intention of the MAP, Minor Architectural Permit, is to legalize the outdoor dining area, so I don't know if that's sufficient.
Oh, it probably is, I just wanted to make sure that was in the record. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. The project is located at 940 Kaia Amanser Suite K and L in the Business Park within the Rancho San Clemente specific plan. So, background, in 2017, there was a conditional use permit approved for a tasting room for the distillery with 16 indoor seats. That was done with an ABC license type 6 and 74, with alcohol service hours of 2:00 PM to 7:00 PM Monday through Friday, and 12:00 PM to 7:00 PM on weekends. So the request is, you have two permits before you today, the first one is an amendment to the existing conditional use permit, to, one, increase seating, two, extend alcohol service hours, and the second permit is a minor architectural permit, again, to legalize the outdoor dining area. So part of the improvement for Drift is to merge the current suite used by the applicant with the adjacent suite to add a sandwich shop. The amendment to the existing CUP is to increase seating by 23 seats, for a total of 28 indoor seats and 11 outdoor seats to be shared with the sandwich shop, and to extend alcohol service hours between 5:00 PM and 10:00 PM on weekdays, and between 11:00 AM and 10:00 PM on weekends for both indoor and outdoor uses. So here's an existing and proposed floor plan, to give you guys an idea. So on the left is the existing floor plan, Suite L is the current, one that's currently vacant, so the plan is for Drift to occupy that suite, Suite L, with the new seating area highlighted in orange. That would be the new kitchen area for the sandwich shop, and then highlighted in blue would be the new storage area. For the minor architectural permit, this is requested, again, to legalize the outdoor patio that has been installed and will operate in conjunction with the sandwich shop. The outdoor patio consists of light brown wood panels to match the existing building's color palette. The project is conditioned to install planter boxes surrounding the outdoor patio to offset the removal of a landscape, small landscaped area. So staff believes the project complies with, the project does comply with parking requirements, further complements the distillery. The use is compatible with uses in the Business Park, code compliance, Orange County Sheriff's Department, and ABC support the request, and staff believes the project is consistent with general plan policies and design guidelines, and therefore recommend that the Planning Commission determine the project categorically exempt from CEQA and approve the conditional use permit and minor architectural permit subject to conditions of approval. Both staff and the applicant are available for any questions, and this concludes my presentation.
Okay, do we have any questions for staff? Let's start from this end, and I'll just pass it down.
Thank you, David, for the report. The first question, our...
Now, first question, question, our chair already asked that to, you confirm that it is an existing and non-conforming expansion, seeking for after-the-fact approval.
That's correct.
Code enforcement issue, other than that, is there any other code enforcement issue?
Nope, uh, code enforcement did review it during the development management team process and did not know any other code issues besides the outdoor patio.
Commissioner Tally, you stated you were absent from, Commissioner Blackwell, were you also absent from that previous? Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, open space ratio, um, this is subject to a specific plan. This site looks pretty much covered by hardscape and a roof. The development standard says a 15% open space ratio. The applicant took out some landscaping area, which is conditioned to, to be made up to city planner's satisfaction. Have you verified that, uh, the open space ratio still meet that requirement? It's very minor, but given the, with fact that if it's at 15, it's probably at the borderline. Does it cause it to go down?
The, the intention, uh, there is a condition, right, that requires the applicant to provide the planter boxes to offset that loss. So the intention was to still maintain compatibility with that, or in compliance with that threshold.
Are we asking the applicant to make up the lost landscaping?
That's correct.
How big is the lost landscaping area?
Uh, I believe it's 49 square feet.
Okay. A couple plan box, does?
We do, we do have a proposed landscape plan. So it'll be a combination of planter boxes surrounding the... There you go, so it's, they're in green boxes, and then we have some, uh, green circles there that, um, represent the landscaping that will be proposed. So that would be, that would be, that would total up to the 49 square feet.
The green area in between these two doors, are there also landscaping?
Correct.
Have you had a building official to review that to make sure that it works for the ADA wheelchair approach?
So the applicant will have to submit for the building permit. It will be reviewed then.
By looking at the map, it doesn't look like it's going to have that. Space for the front approach or side approach, well, it's not going to be side approach because.
Right, I see, I see, I see how that's concerning. The commission would like, we can probably add a little bit more verbiage on that condition to make sure we maintain ADA compliance. Again, the intent is to work with staff and make sure that we meet all requirements, including landscaping requirements and ADA requirements.
Okay. Is a sandwich, sandwich shop considered a restaurant?
The, no. It is, well, this is, this is, this is a tricky one. So the specific plan, the Ranch of San Clemente specific plan, um, in this area does not allow restaurants. However, they do, we do allow sandwich shops. The specific plan, uh, for some reason, does not have a definition of either ones. There is a ratio, though, however, for sandwich shops that did not exceed 20% of that, of the sites. For this site, this is a first sandwich shop, that would be, that would be operating there.
Do we know why specific plan does not allow restaurants in Business Park?
Yeah, there's, there's no rationale behind it. I think the intent was to, you know, maintain that industrial, industrial character and provide, I think the sandwich shop is under the category of service uses. So the intent is to provide maybe some food for businesses and employees that work nearby.
There's a similar use across the street, and that's a brewery. Can you talk a little bit about that and see if there's any similarity between these two?
Is this artifacts?
About outdoor seating and consumption of alcohol in outdoor areas.
So artifacts did get brought up during this review, during the DMT process. We're going to be working with them to, um, bring them into compliance. Right now, they're operating without any food service, um, and using the outdoor dining area. So that is a code enforcement issue. So there is no, it's similar in, in the sense that they have alcohol being manufactured on-site, and they have a tasting room, but as far as the use of the outdoor dining area, right now, it wouldn't be similar to, to Drift, since Drift is using it with a sandwich shop.
Okay, so that's not a conforming use yet.
The, the outdoor use of artifacts is not correct.
Do we have a plan to bring back to Planning Commission eventually, to the City Council, to amend the specific plan to allow restaurants in Business Park?
I'm not aware of that.
Not right now, no, hasn't come up yet.
Now, I have this development standard from the specific plan. And can you read this? It's a D point four, item D point four.
Yeah, outdoor dining shall be a restaurant accessory use only. Outdoor dining areas may only be allowed as an accessory use to an indoor restaurant within a zoning district in which restaurants are permitted, are permitted use.
So it appears that there's a conflict between the code. Maybe the code is archaic, but we're not here to change the, the code. How do we reconcile this? Restaurant is not, not allowing this zone, but therefore outdoor, technically, outdoor dining area cannot exist here.
We, we agree with that, um, interpretation in some way. We did, we, we have to also apply parking ratios, right? And then, um, so in the, in the zoning code, uh, there is no specific parking ratio for a sandwich shop. So when, in reviewing the sandwich shop, uh, because of a point where we have to choose a similar category to apply that parking ratio, so in some way, we'll say it's, it's a restaurant type of use in order to, to continue reviewing this, this project. So I think it has to be maybe a, a specific plan amendment to clean that up.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Could you pass that section down? One question is, is on, um, um, condition 7.14. You talked about the seating must be fixed for the proposed layout. Does that include tables as well as chairs? Is that, is tables included in the definition of seating?
My understanding is that it's seats.
I think so.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we, that it's, I mean, if it's both, that's fine. And, you know, there's, there's tables that are fixed right now.
Right.
We want them fixed into the future so they don't get in the way of the entrance. I just wanted to make sure that condition.
And I can explain why that was established. That was, um, so if you guys see on, on the screen there, there's one entry slash exit point. Building was okay with that one, uh, exit slash entry, uh, given that it was fixed seating. If it wasn't fixed seating, um, they would have to provide a second, uh, entry.
Right, so I just wanted to make sure that the condition that says the seating must be fixed includes the dining tables, and not just the, not just the seats. So I don't know if that means we need to play with, with the condition, or if, you know, maybe Miles got a judgment on that, that it's, you know, it covers tables too, we don't have to worry about it. So that, that was what my question was.
Commissioner Ruland, that was condition number?
7.14. I just want to make sure we cover the intent of what they're going for here, so. And they are fixed right now, but we just want to make sure that in 10 years, you know, they're, they're still fixed, so. That's okay, too. So, um, the other question was, um, I noticed that this didn't come through design review. Is that because this is a minor, minor architectural permit, or was there some other reason?
Uh, yeah, so the city planner does have the ability to, um, refer projects to the design review, uh, subcommittee if he deems it necessary. In this case, uh, the applicant worked with staff to make sure we, we are consistent with design guidelines. Currently, the, the wood panels are dark, so they don't match the color palette of the building now. So that was a request by staff so that they changed the, or lighten the, the finish of the wood panels to improve that consistency. So given that, city planner determined it wasn't necessary to go to DRC.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So we've determined that restaurants are not allowed in the Business Park, correct?
Correct.
And in other codes, not necessarily the specific plan, outdoor dining, uh, is only allowed for restaurants. Correct?
Mr. Chairman.
Correct.
So how do we justify that? I'll give it to you in a minute. So you seem to think it's justified, but for us to make a decision, we don't want to make a decision that violates any codes.
Right.
So continue to think about it, I'll let, I'm sure Jason has a technical.
I do.
Reading of it, so, uh, let's go to Blackwell first, we're just going to pass this down, down the road.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. So David, did we receive an authorization from the property management for this? Was there?
Yeah, that's a requirement before they submit.
So we've seen it, they've seen this current design for the outdoor.
Be a question for.
Yes.
So they, they provided a letter of authorization for the original application, but did, did they provide you a, a second one for this?
You mean, did they approve what was done?
Yes. The outdoor.
I don't know if they, I don't think they submitted that, or have given me anything formal, but I can get that.
Okay, so we don't have, um, so the property management has not seen this and has not agreed to it, as far as we know, at this point.
They have, uh, yeah, they're, they're there on site all the time.
I mean, they, they, to answer that specific question, I don't know if they've seen the actual rendering or elevation drawing, but they do, um, in writing, I'm assuming, get informed that they're going to be applying for a conditional use permit, a minor architectural permit that involves all this work. Whether they saw this specific elevation drawing, not sure.
We need to submit to them, I mean, and I, I mean, if I need to get you a letter from Olin.
Well, that's why I'm asking, because I know there's a process in all the Business Parks up there that you go through when you're changing the aesthetic, the exterior, you've got other tenants that may say, hey, I don't want that, it's not what I intended.
Yeah, you can't even, Olin's notorious for, like, you can't even put a plan outside without it being approved.
Right.
So, yeah.
So I just want to make sure that we see that, that's important.
Pass it down to Commissioner Calvin.
So, um, wanted to make sure that we're talking about, because restaurants aren't allowed, but sandwich shops are, correct? So I think, um, I think I was looking at the ordinance here that Commissioner Wu printed out, and he's right, that Section D of, of this ordinance states that outdoor dining shall be a restaurant accessory use only. But we need to back up a little bit, and Section B of 17.28.205 for outdoor dining areas states that the applicability, this section shall apply to outdoor dining facilities that are in accessory use at indoor restaurants. And so since we're not having an indoor restaurant, this section doesn't apply to what we're dealing with right here. So if it was an indoor restaurant, not a sandwich shop, then we'd have some issues that we needed to reconcile. But in this case, the code's relevant to an indoor restaurant, but not here. So there is no, um, there's no conflict, right? So, um, I think the code's silent on outdoor dining at sandwich shops.
Open for interpretation.
No, I could certainly find a finding based upon the fact that it's not applicable to the section that we're dealing with.
There's no prohibition there.
That's right. Would you? Do you want to opine on it, or do you not want to opine? Would you like to see it?
Generally, yeah, I haven't seen it. Generally speaking, um, the MUNI code is not going to apply. These standards won't apply, generally speaking, when we're dealing with the plan, which is what we're dealing with here, right? There are provisions, I have not reviewed this in detail, but the provisions in the plan that deal with accessory uses, with these types of uses, that, that would always trump the MUNI code, right? And you couple that with, with the reading that I've just heard, I, I think this is probably okay. That's that I have not dealt into this question, uh, beyond this conversation right here. But typically, this, this takes a backseat to the actual plan that we're dealing with, which is, I think, what, what is at issue here, so.
And, and even if this code applied, if there wasn't a specific plan, the applicability is such that it doesn't apply to this specific instance.
It's, it sounds like it. Have you not reviewed it? Yes, it sounds like it.
I know, you need to review court.
But that's, yeah, it sounds like it.
Okay.
That's all I had.
Commissioner Brown.
No, I, um, I kind of agree that, uh, with Jason's interpretation here, and I think we have a common man's approach to this. It's a reasonable expansion of, uh, of the business, and I agree with the applicant's comment. Some of the other approvals we've done in this Business Park, Olin, uh, very tightly controls their efforts. So, uh, if he doesn't have a letter of approval, they'll give him one, or, well, let's put it this way. If they didn't approve what he's doing, he would, he wouldn't be here to not. Come on, we did Met Hero down the street, and some of the other ones around there, and Artifacts and all the other stuff. So I think I can support the findings.
Okay, uh, any other questions from staff? Would the applicant like to make a statement? Oh, come up to the podium.
Can I make you a TV first? I was just here for questions from you guys, but, um, you know, we've been producing spirits for the last couple of years, and, uh, you know, we still want to be a distillery. That's our main purpose in life, is to be a distillery, distribute bars, restaurants. We're starting to get around town, um, slowly take over Southern California, and hopefully go national one day. The, the patio was more of something that, um, yeah, obviously, I did it. And without doing this, um, came to my attention that we needed to go through a conditional use permit. So, um, it's definitely a glorified furniture piece. I have two large wood structures that I can move with my forklift if needed. That's one of the conditions that Olin gave me, is everything I do has to be replaced. So the vegetation that I'm actually, that I filled in, the 49 square feet, I'll have to jackhammer that little concrete pad, replace everything. We capped the sprinklers, everything has got to go back to original. So hopefully, I'll be able to purchase a building here in the next couple of years and expand, so.
Any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. We will co-close the, um, presentation portion of this item and open it to public comment. I see none, so we will open it for discussion. Who would like to start on discussion? You good? You good? I will say, um, the maintenance of it right now is being wood and being movable. It does need the, the color update and, uh, whatnot. And I want to just, uh, say also to the whole interpretation of the sandwich shop and the outdoor dining, and this doesn't necessarily apply to this one. Artifacts this evening had tables out in the parking lot serving tacos like it was a restaurant, using that dining room, so they were, either need a special permit, but if they don't have a sandwich shop inside, that patio doesn't work, in my judgment. So it either has to be associated with food service of some, some sort.
Generally, Artifacts uses trucks.
Uh, they had tables out in two parking spaces, serving tacos and buffet food, no truck.
No taco truck inside.
No, I did not see one. But that, that would require a special use permit.
Yeah, and I don't, I'm not sure if that's Artifacts's business, that they do that.
Right, and that's not what's in front of us now, it's your project, so, a different situation. Okay, uh, do we have?
Well, I, I just have one comment, if I may.
Commissioner Blackwell.
So this is really, um, not specific to the current application, but it's to staff, just to, if we can make a note to really put efforts into a specific plan amendment, get some language rolling that really kind of differentiates the two, especially when it comes to parking, you know, sandwich shop versus a restaurant in these areas. We've had a number of these things come up over the years that we talk about, but then it gets forgotten. And, uh, but I think this is an important one, because I think this could be a trend. We might see more of these. Seems to be popular, so it might be worth looking into right away.
And, uh, Commissioner Brown. Would you like to comment? We've got a number of specific plans that are going to be prepared and come before us, and they should probably be addressed in those also.
Probably, uh, because we have, what, Moss Molinos, Pirable, um, Marblehead Coastal, everything that affects the coastal land use plan's got to be touched. That includes Forster Ranch, because one golf course is in there. So probably, uh, that could. So probably, that could probably be spread along about five of our six specific plans, I imagine.
And it appears it needs to be handled by the specific plan. We can't use the MUNI code.
That's right.
To control it.
Okay. Yeah. I have some headaches later on.
Commissioner Wu.
I'm, I'm going to support this project tonight because I, I feel that this type of project is, is pretty good. It's a good thing for the community. Business park, we can add some misuse at a restaurant in a business park. It doesn't take more parking because of the, the offset of parking demand. By the way, it's controlled, parking has a separate control anyway, but it reduce people travel, you know, vehicle mileage traveled. Some people can walk there, grab, grab a quick lunch, and it'll provide a place for people to go in the nighttime. I really don't know what prevents a restaurant to be open in business park. I think I'm going to accept that chested into a not interpretation offered by Commissioner Natale. I, I don't agree with that, but I'm going to accept it for the convenience of tonight. I really want the staff to come back to us to have a specific plan amendment to look at allowing a restaurant in business park, or at least assess it and make a recommendation. I think it's going to be, it's only going to be fair to other businesses because if I were a business, if I operate a restaurant, I want to go into a business park and open something. I look at the code, it's clear enough that I cannot do it. Distinguishing between a sandwich shop and a restaurant is really, it's, it's a stretch. Sandwich is a restaurant, my viewpoint, so we would rather just simply allow them in business park. And that's, of course, something in the future, I look forward to seeing that.
Comments?
Yeah. A quick comment regarding this, the issue of the, the restaurants in the business park. For when we did get to these specific plans, I think, you know, this is an industrial use, a little unusual use for our, for our particular city, and this is certainly an industrial business, right? They're a distillery, that's, that's their main line, and this is an accessory use. Now, for this particular kind of business, it makes sense to have tasting rooms and serve a little food and that sort of thing, right? It just, it, it fits. The, the rub with just kind of generally allowing restaurants in an industrial area is now you're kind of starting to change the nature of the land use in the area, and that would be my concern. And I, I'm actually happy with these, just, these breweries and distilleries. There's like three right there within about a hundred yards of each other. They're, they've got, it's kind of a nice little atmosphere, sort of after-hours thing going on, but they are this industrial use. That's what they do is, is that sort of industrial type of work, and then they have an accessory sort of thing. So just, just as, as a caution, you know, for these sorts of things, it makes sense, but just to start, like, to build a kind of a big restaurant in the middle of the industrial area and have that start to get restaurants in there, we, we might start to lose an industrial area that we might need, so.
Commissioner, I was going to, I was going to mention, there is a restriction right now specifically for sandwich shops, and it's like twenty percent of the uses in the business park, right? Is that correct?
On each business park property, so if there's like a, a center there, it's limited to twenty percent. So I don't know if it's, maybe there's a threshold that could be considered if, if that's a recommendation that we make in the future to allow restaurants, but just want to let you know what our standards right now are for sandwich shops. It is limited, they can't go wherever they want, and there is a limitation.
I was going to bring that up, but there is a twenty percent.
There is a twenty percent restriction. We recently kind of applied that to a parking, shared parking agreement over by the Kacorian Theater in, in design review. It's kind of a standard number. And in a way, that twenty percent, to take the opposite view from Commissioner Ruin is some food service in the business park might be beneficial because every day at lunch, four hundred businesses empty out onto the road to go find a place to eat lunch. And so if you have some local eatery within a certain percentage limitation, you certainly draw down the traffic going in and out of that place between eleven and one, up and down Almond Serre and everything else as you try to exit that area. That's one of our most critical intersections in town. So there is, we had to look at that, that there's a, some kernels of food service might be beneficial from our overall traffic situation by allowing and, but tightly controlling the percentage might be beneficial. Just to take the opposite side from Commissioner Ruin, who I respect a lot.
Would that come down? Can we make a motion?
You've got the mic.
I'm not, I'm not going to give it up. I'd like to make a motion on resolution number PC one nine zero one three, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of San Clemente, California approving amendment to conditional use permit one seven zero three six AMCUP eighteen dash six oh seven and minor architectural permit one nine dash one oh nine, drift distillery expansion to expand an existing distillery, the tasting room, and construct an outdoor patio for alcohol and food service located at nine four zero Calle Imanasera Suite K and L. We have a motion by Calley, second by Ruen. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
That was the, that was the only, you're, you're good to go. Good luck. The next item on the agenda is new business. I have one item I'd just like to bring up. The reason we had the meeting here tonight was to make sure that an applicant didn't have to wait another week because of space that was unavailable. And we've had some pretty light agendas and canceled meetings in design review, and I want to make sure that staff has the resources to get all the projects done within our kind of self-imposed timeframes. So if we could get a update report from Gabriel maybe at the next meeting telling us that, yes, we're on target for getting jobs done in time, we have some lagging, some not. That's something I'm sensitive to, and I know others are here also. So if that's possible, that'd be great. Or if you'd like to make a comment now, that'd be sufficient also.
You must have looked ahead at, at future meetings. So the next meeting, we have a report on performance measures. And so Plan Division does assess how it performs with respect to discretionary reviews. So I'll have a report on that next week to see how we're doing with our, you know, self-imposed timeframes, so.
We want to make sure we're servicing the public and the applicants as best we possibly can.
Okay, well, council approved timelines, there we go.
So I want to make sure we're keeping up with that. That's, we're tasked with that. Any other new business? Old business? Anyone have any old business? Any reports of commissioners and staff?
Actually, yes.
Commissioner Ruen.
You know, I've noticed at the Pier Bowl, we have some new red, kind of the pink concrete walkways that have been installed over in the Pier Bowl. And that's a, that's, that's an architectural overlay area, historic, next to historic property. But I don't ever, we didn't see that come through, at least not while I've been on design review or the planning commission. And I was hoping you could kind of explain why that's the case because we've seen, like, with the bathrooms we did down there and everything like that, that was quite a, you know, quite a big thing that came through the planning commission. So I was a little surprised that there was that kind of construction going on in the Pier Bowl without planning being involved in some way.
Yeah, so that project, Pier Bowl, it's an ADA project. And, you know, I know Public Works did ask us about color for, for the improvements. And I probably wasn't aware of that something in the past that we've had go through design review subcommittee, but plan was consulted on it. And so if that's something that DRC wants to review, that's.
Doesn't it require a conditional use permit, you know, it being in an architectural overlay and, and right there next to a historic resource?
That, I'd have to double check.
It might, I mean, it's installed now, it might be worth doing. I know that, that the pink concrete there is something that we've done, did in the sidewalks in decades past, and it's something that we've been, definitely been moving away from. That's why I was a little surprised to see it. Now, if it's ADA, then maybe there's, you know, there's more to it than, you know, just putting in tile. But it seemed like it was something that we would usually see go through planning, you know, and/or design review. So, so I wanted to bring that up, let people know about it and, and kind of see what the situation might be if, I don't know if something might have been dropped out or if it was a perfectly appropriate process because of the way that it was. And if it did bypass us, you know, as part of the process, it'd be good for us to know that because, you know, we might want to consider if that's the right thing to do or not, given the sensitivity of that particular area. So a lot of parts of town, it wouldn't be an issue, but, you know, just because it's that part of town.
Yeah, let me do a little bit more background on that, and I'll have a report to Plan Commission the next meeting.
That's great, thank you.
Commissioner Wu.
Thank you. In this month, as a coastal advisory committee meeting, we finished the work plan. We also make a recommendation to the city council to enforce the street sweeping on a sweeping day throughout the city public street to reduce pollutant being washed into our ocean. Because currently, some area still have street sweeping, but the parking is not enforced. In other areas, parking are enforced. So we ask the city to, we ask the city council to look at it to enforce them equitably throughout the city.
I actually have a question for you. You may not know the answer to this, but my understanding is, is the city pays for that street sweeping, and a lot of the reasons we do it is to keep junk out of the ocean. Do we have any state or federal grants that help us do that? Because the ocean is, is considered a general resource, particularly, you know, protected by the coastal commission and that sort of thing. Is there any, you know, anything that we get to help us keep that clean?
I'm not sure, I don't have an answer, but.
Commissioner Brown has the answer to that.
Yeah, this is a. Let's give him the mic.
This will be well heard. He's always well heard.
With my, my five years on the coastal advisory committee, we brought that up several times before then, and having citywide enforcement for, for sweeping, it's always been a political sore point with the current mixture of the council. I think we've al, we recommended, you know, street, citywide enforcement. They only enforce it in the neighborhood pride area. I'm surprised the city had been sued over it because it's not, is discriminatory, it's a certain area in town that they do ticket. But I think it's great you're going forward again. To answer your question, we, we tax ourselves with a clean ocean fee that you see in your water bill every month, and that pays for the street sweeping. And that tax is renewable, it's not, it's not a tax, it's a fee, and that's going to be renewable in 2020. So it'll be up before the vote of the people in two years. And so that's how we pay for it.
I'm going to add to that.
Still going here. Here we go.
On our monthly water bill, there are two items that, one is a storm drainage fee, another one is a clean ocean fee. They're essentially the same thing, serving the same purpose. The clean ocean fee is going to expire next year, so it will be up to the voter if we want to continue that or not. But these two fees covers the, covers lots of items, including the street sweeping.
All right. Any other comments on your reports of commissioners and staff?
Just one quick report, just want to let you know, remember, you might recall the last time I presented a development project map, and maybe, maybe Tom was a little bit modest not to present what they've done, but I know the screen is to the back of you, but they also provided a, a map of CIP projects throughout the city, and it identifies the type of projects and, kind of similar to the map that we presented. You know, you could zoom in and see where these projects are at. It'll show you a shape. So for example, if it's a yellow on the legend, it's a, it's a street project. And when you zoom in closer, it'll identify where that street project is going to take place. Further, if you want to get more information on the project, and you could click on, on the dot. Maybe something wrong on my computer here. Oh, there we go. And then click to get more information. It'll come up with the project details. So I just want to let you know that's available.
Is it on the website now?
It's on the website now. If you click on the tab, that's current projects, the link is there.
Is that where you're going to, you're going to put your?
Both of them are there.
Okay. Okay, any other items for reports from commission? Okay. Make a motion at the, we adjourned to the next, adjourned regular meeting of the Planning Commission to be held on June fifth, 2019 at six PM in council chambers located at one hundred Avenida Presidio, San Clemente, California, as the study session has been canceled due to a lack of business. Motion by Calley, second by Brown. All in favor?
Aye.
Passage your name and surname.